Afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Educator to Educator School Board Candidates Meet and Greet. Our agenda today, we're going to follow the PowerPoint slides. And of course, I'm welcoming all of you here. So glad that you've taken the time to be with us this afternoon. Education is one of the most important things in this world. We're going to do the, now we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Now, we have the Educator to Educator Network Steering Committee. This group has been together since about 2009. Our mission statement is to build a network that supports public education, become a partner in the E2E network, contact educators to validate voter eligibility, registration, ensure early voting to all elections, and verify that all candidates elected support public education. So I want to thank the committee. We've been together for a very long time, and we're going to try to grow our group some. But we've had some years where we've had a lot of folks participate. I also want to tell you that there are 21 ISDs in Tarrant County. So it will be beautiful if we could have representation from every ISD in Tarrant County. And we could really be a powerful group. Our Candidates Meet and Greet rules. So those are the rules. And now, we're going to have a kickoff remarks by Dr. Michael Evans, the Mayor of City of Mansfield. Without further delay, I give you the Honorable Dr. Michael Evans.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, Sister Smith, and to your entire board. Thank you all for the invitation. You did not have to do it. And I thank you so very much, also to Maricela, who is a, just an avid supporter of our campaign. And she has been also of my service. So to her and to you, if you don't mind, Ms. Smith, let me just say this. One, I want to commend, commend you. I want to commend this, this board for the fact that you are, in regard to educator to educator, just when you talked about building a network that supports public education, that, that is so much of the bottom line here. And you have, and I did not know this, but of course, it took some time to read and study up on it. Because when Maricela asked you to do something, she, she served so well here in Mansfield. I couldn't tell her no. And then it was a good opportunity for me to read up. And listen, I applaud you and I applaud your group for inviting in the candidates. And I hope that people who are listening fully understand what you're doing. You didn't just invite in candidates from said party, la, 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 la. You invited in the candidates because ultimately, it's about the kids. Secondly, it is important to recognize that these are nonpartisan positions. So, so even as, and again, you know, when you get on the county level, state level, I know that changes. But, but I want to commend you all because you invited in everybody. I know that Maricela invited folks personally. I saw her do it from, from all sides. So that, you just have no idea how happy I am because there were some individuals who, you know, soon as you, you give a party affiliation or they say something, oh, there, oh, look, we knew that, you know, that kind of mess. But in my business, that ain't nothing but the devil. But so let me, let me, let me press forward as not to hold you long. A couple of things. And one is, I want to thank you because I do need to, if you don't mind, I want to just highlight these five propositions that we have on the ballot in Mansfield. But let, but let me just talk about educator to educator. Let me just say that. Thank you for reading all that stuff. Bless your heart on my bio. La, 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 la. Y'all, that don't mean a thing if you're not out there trying to do it. And you cannot do it by yourself. You cannot do it. So these individuals who are serving as candidates, my prayer is that you are not using these positions as a stepping stone to something else. I can honestly tell you that I was fully engaged with, with, with the Mansfield Board of Trustees when I was on that board. I was fully engaged as the Tarrant County College Trustee, fully engaged as a region for Baylor University. And you all, bless your hearts. I'm praying that you all are fully engaged, that, that, that if you are blessed, and I'm going to use, it's Sunday, so I'm going to use some church language. Y'all just going to have to get all over and be all right. Then let me tell you something. If you are blessed to sit in those seats to a person, y'all are going to have to learn how to blot out all of that noise from the outside. And you're going to have to band together with however many people are on your board, the other seven, six rather, because you'll make seven. You're going to have to band together with those individuals and do what Royce West told me when I was elected the first time. He said, Mike, congratulations. God bless you. I know you. He's known me since I was a kid. He said, boy, here's the thing you got to do. Learn how to account to Ford. So to each and every one of you, whether you're with Arlington, Mansfield, Crowley, I heard one sister from South Lake. You're going to have to learn how to get along with those people on that board. And you're going to have to understand that it's never your way or the highway. You're going to have to learn how to come to the middle in order to get things done. And then you are going to better serve your community. So, so, so when, when, when we say with this particular group, E2E, that you are building a network to support public education, it's got to be about public education. I hope we don't elect anybody, I don't care what party you're from. I hope we don't elect anybody who, who has, who has in their heart to support charter schools or have in their heart to pull away kids from the public school system. I mean it. And this is being recorded, so I know exactly. Y'all can play this again and somebody can take me out of context if you want to. But I'm saying, if you don't full-throatedly support the public education system here in the state of Texas, you are wasting the voters' time. You are wasting their time and you're cheating our babies out of an education. Now you are. If you're not saying to the state legislature, fully fund public education. But if you're doing it so that you could be accepted in some group or club, I, I wish you would drop out. Because we need to have people who bold enough to say, I want kids who can read and write. I don't care if they white, I don't care if they black, I don't care what they look like, where they come from. We want children educated who can go on and help our country to be a better place. And that's the past is, okay, now I know I'm out of church. I apologize, but, but, but y'all invited me. So that, that's my little piece. I'm hoping to God that you will be elected if you, if you demonstrate to the public that you are really behind public education. And that also means, and pardon me, Ms. Smith, but that also means that you need to support your superintendent. We're losing superintendents because we are allowing that outside noise to tie their hands and to scare you. And it's scary when you're sitting, you know, it's seven, eight of y'all, it's eight of you sitting at that desk and you got 100 folk hollering at you. It's scary. But that's why you have police. And that's why you have a security system. But you got to be bold enough to stand for right, no matter what those emails say. Once you get elected, you've been called to serve. And you got to work hand in hand with that administrator. Oh, and by the way, don't think that you get, you were elected in order to do their job. It is against the law for you to get into the business of those principals at that school. You only hire and fire the superintendent. Everybody else is not your concern. That's his or her concern. But we're starting to lose some good people, y'all, in education because people are coming with other agendas, other ideologies. And it's killing, it's killing our education system. And it breaks my heart. It breaks my heart. So God bless all y'all that want to serve on the board. Because I don't know, it probably would take Gabriel to visit me in the night now to want to serve on the school board. So all of y'all that want to do it, just do it for the right reason. Let me just say that. So Ms. Smith, that's that part. Here's the other, in Mansfield, we got these five propositions that, that I would like for the listeners to support. They're not red, they're not blue. They, it's all about a better Mansfield. It's, 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 it's all about a, a, a city that is growing. And it's all about making available amenities for everybody, for all incomes and from all backgrounds. The first one is a veterans memorial. We support our veterans. We don't have one, we need one. The second is a multi-generational recreation center and library and aquatic center. We don't have one. The third has to do with our park system. You've got parks that are now rundown that need to be brought back up to speed on, on both sides of town now. And we also have a trail system that everybody can enjoy. And all of this is stuff, all but, but number two, all of these are propositions for individuals to enjoy in a growing city. The third one is a miracle field for these children, those children that have physical challenges, where all those babies can come, where they, where they have MS, cerebral palsy, they can all come and play on the field. And their little lives can be blessed and be made better. So you'll see that on the ballot in Mansfield. But Ms. Smith, thank you so much. Thank y'all. Thank you for doing what I think should be done at a time like this. Opening your doors and allowing candidates from all walks of life, all political stratas to come in and to sell themselves. They need to sell themselves to the voter, no matter who that person votes for on the county level, state level, or the national level. Because we need people in these seats who's going to have the children's best interest at heart first. So Ms. Smith, thank you very much. And I'll hush and give people an opportunity to ask me a question if they have one.
Well, I just wanted to say that we, first of all, thank you again for, you know, gracing us with your presence and with your experience. But I, I just want to know, if you were sitting in those, in that, that seat again, what would be your biggest challenge, you think, facing a board trustee at this time?
I, I think, I think the biggest challenge right now is voting your conscience. I really mean that. I really mean that. Voting your, your conscience. When we take that oath to, to, to serve and to protect and to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America as well as the Constitution of the state of Texas, there is, there is this tug. I mean, it's an internal tug, you know? And if you haven't been in that, that seat, you know, you say, oh, no, I'm going to do it all the time. That's a lie. Because you've got people out there who you know, who you see in the community, and you just might disagree with them because they may say some nasty things. Y'all might have been, y'all, I mean, y'all, y'all probably would go to the same boots, you know, when it's time to vote on the national spectrum or it's time to vote on the, on the county or state spectrum. But then they may be saying some things that may be popular in the Rotary Club or popular in the Fraternal Sorority that you may not agree with. And you, being a board member, you get to see things from a broader perspective. And, and you're going to be challenged to say to your friend, you know, Larry, John, Shirley, you know, Kathleen, Kath, you might say, you know, I love you, appreciate you. But, 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 but there's more to it than what you've heard. And I can't share all of it with you, but you need to know we're trying to do what's best. You may see them at church. They may give you the, you know, as, as my kids would say, the stink eye. But you're going to have to be bold enough to make decisions based upon what you know is right, rather than what, rather than what is popular. And I really mean that.
Well, that is, that, that knowledge that you have, that you shared from your experiences is, is worth more than gold. Rachel, do we have anyone that has a question for Dr. Evans at this time in chat?
Not so far, no.
Okay. I, I know that he has somewhere to go. But again, like I said, we're just glad that you're able to come. And if there, when you leave the Zoom, if there are other folks that have questions when you leave, I'm going to get in touch with you and make sure that I get those folks to you because this is a really crucial time for school board. And we want to make sure we get folks in there that support public education and they understand the job. Like you said, you have friends on both sides of the spectrum, but you want to do what's right for the children. And that is the most important thing. Because I'm thinking about my children and my grandchildren myself. And so if we, if they, if the board members think about, why am I here? Why am I serving? If they keep that at the front of, of, when they're getting ready to make decisions, I think that will make a huge difference. And that, that speaks volumes. And we just thank you so much for being here. And I hope this won't be the last time you come.
Let, let me tell you something. I told somebody the other day, I said, listen, if you invite me, I will come. And that's, that's from wherever you're from. If you invite me, I, I will come because I think that you, you don't get to serve the public if you're only talking to one side. So if, if you're real about what you get to do, and I know that this is temporary, sister, I know. But, but while I have this opportunity, we say what we say. And, and, and again, thank you. Thank you, board member, Ms. Roberts, Kath, all y'all, Cheryl, Kathleen, you know, Kathy. God bless you. Keep doing this. Keep doing this. Keep the doors open and let the folks come on in because, y'all, we need it more now than ever before. So thank you so much.
Thank you and enjoy your evening.
By God's grace. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, now we're going to go into with the school board candidates. And we're going to start off with, we have Mansfield. And Mansfield is a premier school district that has a diverse and multicultural population, serving 49 schools with 35,000 students, located in Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex, serving students in the city of Mansfield, sections of Arlington, Grand Prairie, Burleson, Fort Worth, Venus, Alvarado, and Kennedale. There are more than 100 languages other than English spoken in the district. It encompasses 94 square miles. There are 24 elementary schools, K through four, seven intermediate schools, five through six, five and six, fifth and sixth grade, seven middle, middle schools, seventh and eighth grade, two standalone STEM academies, five traditional high schools, one career tech academy, and one alternative education center and early college high school. That is a lot going on in Mansfield. So, without further ado, Dr. Benita Reed?
Yes, ma'am. I'm on the call.
Hello, Dr. Reed. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm doing fine. The first thing we'd like for you to do is to tell us a little bit about yourself. You have one minute to say, give an opening statement about, give your name, position running for, and what candidates hope to accomplish in your position. And then you'll have two minutes for each of your questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me. I'm Dr. Benita Reed. And I've been in the Arlington, I've been in the Arlington or Mansfield ISD area since 98. I've been in Mansfield ISD specifically for over 20 years. And I moved here in 98, as I said, from Houston, Texas, where I had been in education already. So I've been in education for a little over 30 years. I am an educator at Tarrant County College. But when I moved here in 98, I started at Alstair Junior High School in Arlington ISD. And I taught seventh and eighth grade in English Language Arts. I taught then and I still teach all populations. That would be special education, 504 students, honor students, as well as general education students. What I like to do on the board is to ensure that we have excellence for all students, which means that our students are excelling academically and behaviorally at an, at a rate that is consistent among all of them. I'd also like to see that our students are ready for the next level and they transition seamlessly, whether it's fourth to fifth grade or seventh to ninth, seventh to eighth grade, or just high school to college, career, or military, so that we prepare them academically as well as for life. I'd also like to ensure that we partner together with our parents, teachers.
I'm on the introduction. First question I'd like to ask you, and thank you again, thank you again for your service, for your years of service teaching our kids. What is the plan for all students who have either disappeared off the grid or have not learned the TEES for their grade level this past year?
That's a great question. So I believe the plan for students who have disappeared off the grid or who have not accomplished the TEES presently is for us to devise a plan that will help them with, one, that will identify their strengths as well as their weaknesses so that we can work with them to build up their weaknesses, whether that's Saturday school or having a structured tutorial session before and or after school. We do have some of those programs in place already. I'd also like to see where our students are engaged in the classroom in some supplemental work that is specifically designed for those areas where they need more specialized assistance with their areas where they're not needing the TEES. And then thirdly, I'd like to make sure that our teachers are providing the instruction where they want to, because our teachers want to do more instruction. So I'd like to provide our teachers with more assistance. Maybe even if we had more students who were doing the student teaching from UTA or TCU, our area students, student teachers come in to assist our teachers so they can give those students more one-on-one intensive instruction without giving up the rigor of the academic classroom.
The second question is charter schools are increasing in the community. What ideas do you have to keep our students in public schools? Because I do know that in the charter school, they, they don't have to be certified teachers. And the, the kids have generally, they're not, they, when they, when they return to public school, they're returning at a loss and you're having to catch them up. What are your thoughts on that? And how to try to keep them in public, public schools?
To keep our students in public school as opposed to going to charter schools, I'd like to propose maybe, I guess, a three-point plan, which would be to ensure that we have open house, like we do when our students are already in classes. We have open house where we have the pre, the post-class or post-school that would come to that elementary. So for example, my, where we, our feeder pattern is Cora Spencer and Mary Lillard. So Mary Lillard would come on over to Cora Spencer and we would begin quote-unquote recruiting those students from Cora Spencer and engaging them in activities that are academically based as well as those extracurricular activities. So then we create a community that is conducive for transitioning our students seamlessly from one course or one grade level to the next. I think another thing that would help is that those, the teachers begin partnering. I remember doing this before, where we partner with teachers in high school and college. And we get, we have an opportunity to have committee work and do some work together so that our students see our faces and they know our names. And they know that we're partnering with them as well as their teachers and some parents to ensure that they transition again, as you said, seamlessly, and we don't lose them to the area charter schools. I think another great thing would be is to incentivize our students to show them that it is an incentive to transition to the area public school system as opposed to going to the charter school. It might even be best, pardon me if I say this, but it might be best to see what the charter school is doing as a best practice that we can adopt or incorporate, if we have not done also, into the public school system. I agree with you. We do not want to lose them and we definitely don't want to lose those students and they come back to us after having lost academic strengths as well as academic rigorous work.
Wow, that's, I'm taking the time because I know you guys are out there at the polling locations. The thing is, the voters need to hear you. They need, they know you're there physically, but to hear you speaks volumes. And we do appreciate you taking the time to come. So thank you. We have place four. Do we have Ms., our Ms. Sneed in the house?
I'm here, Ms. Sneed.
Ms. Sneed, how are you?
I'm well. How are you?
I'm fine, Ms. Amanda Sneed. And the first thing we'd like for you to do is to have your opening statement for one minute. Then include your name, position running for, and what you hope to accomplish in this position. Then I'll ask you two questions.
Sounds good. Thank you. My name is Dr. Mandy Sneed. I'm running for place four. I'm number one on the ballot. I'm running to help improve diversity in the, on the board, but also in the classroom. I've had five students come through the Timberview Feeder Pattern over the last 18 years. My husband and I have been here since 2001. We've enjoyed living in South Arlington, but the Timberview Feeder Pattern specifically. We also own a pharmacy in South Grand Prairie, so a business owner where we employ about 60 individuals from various backgrounds. And then lastly, we run a nonprofit organization for youth in Mansfield, South Arlington, and Grand Prairie, where we encourage students to find their passion both on the court but also in the community through community service opportunities that we help look for and, and get them involved in. I'd be honored to have your vote. I just want to make sure that we can get back to educating our students without a lot of the outside influences that we're seeing right now through national party politics. We know that Mansfield is a great district and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Sneed, since you've been in education for a while, I'm going to ask you another, a question. What do you think about, the kids have been exposed to traumatically, how it affects their learning? With the pandemic being as it has been for the last two years, a lot of children has, have not recovered from the trauma of the pandemic. And is it affected their learning and their behavior? What would you do if you were elected to try and work on that, to try to, to make headway with that?
Thank you for the question. And just one correction. I'm a doctor of pharmacy and I don't have experience in the classroom or in the education system. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But to answer your question, I've spoken with teachers, admins, paraprofessionals. And kind of what I'm hearing across the board is that our students, not only did they experience some academic losses, but also socially, we've noticed some challenges as these students come back to the classroom. The younger students, you know, are lacking social skills just because they hadn't interacted with friends, you know, family and teachers ever, in some cases. So I think that we have a lot of work to do there. I think part of, of the solution is really diving into the mental health toolkit that was created by the state of Texas late last year, implementing some of the practices that have been approved through that toolkit. Also, we know that our district is far behind the recommended ratio of social worker and counselors to students. So if we could prioritize some funding towards some of those positions so that we can potentially have, you know, a counselor on each campus that can work with those students who are experiencing some, you know, some challenges that might lead to behavior issues. I think if we can get to the root of the, of the problem while we're having behavioral issues, we can work better to prevent them from occurring and disrupting learning.
Thank you for that answer. And on that same note, how would you engage the community to improve public school, public schools? Because, you know, there's a, there's a huge gap, you know? Most parents are working and they're working several jobs and they're, they're, they're trying to balance that, that family work thing. And it's difficult, especially with the things we've gone through the last two years. What would be your first project, what you would propose to the board to try to close that gap?
I think what we've noticed in, in some populations is that our parents, all parents want to be involved in their students' wellbeing and academic career. But we need to meet those parents where they are. So, you know, by us engaging parents in the evenings after school between maybe six and eight, some of our parents are at work at that time and they can't participate. You know, so we create programs where, you know, we can have a morning option for, you know, for PTA meetings or, or, you know, parent teacher conferences so that parents who want to be involved but have different life schedules can still be engaged. So I think that's one thing that we can, we can do to meet parents where they are and just to encourage them to be as hands-on as they can be and would like to be. We know that our students, our students' academic success is driven by what our teachers are providing us in the classroom, but also, you know, our parents being involved at home to be able to continue that learning and to foster that environment once the student gets home. So I think as long as we keep parents involved and engaged, then our students will continue to excel.
That's a very good answer. And I like what you said about meeting the parents where they are. And I do so appreciate you taking the time. It speaks volumes that you want to engage with the voters so they can actually hear you. You know, so we appreciate that and we appreciate you coming. Thank you so much. Joanna Cardoza here. Joanna, hello, Joanna.
Hi, Carol. Good.
Good to see you. Thank you so much for coming. I know you guys are out there in the polling locations. But again, we're happy that you're here so the voters can hear directly from you. Of course, the first thing I want you to do is, is give us your opening statement, include your name, position, running for, and what you hope to accomplish in this position. include your name, position, running for, and what you hope to accomplish in this position. Then I'll have two questions for you.
All right, one minute. Okay. Hi, my name is Joanna Cardoza. I'm running for Mansfield School Board, place five. I have four children in the Mansfield that have gone through the Mansfield Independent School District, local businesswoman, very involved in the community, I've run a lot of cities, school district community boards and advisory committees. I know there's many issues that are affecting our school district, but right now my top three items are, we need to make teacher recruitment and retention a priority. We can't teach kids and we don't have teachers. Also closing the opportunity gap. We have student populations that are not performing at the same level as their peers. And also more parental and community involvement to address the academic achievement gap and also student behaviors in the classroom.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for that answer. It's a very good answer. Do you believe school leaders, the principals should have autonomy to run their own school building?
Do you agree with the question?
Do you believe that school, school principals should have the ability to run their own schools? Just run it the way they need to run it for that particular school? Because all the schools are different, all the kids are different depending on the area. So what do you think about the principals? Because a lot of times they'll have to just march to the tune of the board and they may not be addressing the concerns of the students that they, they teach, that they teach.
Yes, I do believe that our teachers and our campus administrators should have a little bit more autonomy to run their classrooms and their schools. Each feeder pattern and, and the Mansfield Independent School District is different and has to deal with different issues, just like other school districts. So I think that would definitely help to handle the situation with student behavior in the classroom.
Okay, so if you were to, to be able to become a board member, what would be, what would you consider to be an effective board member? What would you bring to the table and say, hey, I'm going to vote for Ms. Cardoza because of this? What do you specifically and uniquely bring to the table? Well, you should be hired as the school board trustee.
What I bring to the, to the board is that I've been so involved in the community, as a community member, a community leader, a businesswoman and a mom. Was, and I've been an active PTA member, so I know my community. I understand and know the needs of the, the schools in our school district. We're not just dealing with making sure our kids are ready to enter the workforce or college or the military. We have a lot of kids that have additional social needs. So that's something that also needs to be addressed. But also I have a different perspective, being a first generation. And my parents were immigrants from first generation. Also come from a background from Latino community. Thirty percent of our kids in the school district are Latino. We don't have that representation, which also brings me back to also making sure we're more inclusive of the community that we serve. We have over 100 languages spoken to, spoken in our school district. So we need to make sure that we were being more inclusive and including those families that still speak English. And also in regards to more parental involvement and more participation in our schools.
Thank you for that and all that you do in the community, Joanna. And I wish you well on your campaign. And thank you so much for leaving the polls and coming to speak to the voters because it's really important that they understand and know what you're all about. And we do thank you. Thank you so much, Joanna. Okay, I have Lakeisha Dawkins. Lakeisha?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello, Lakeisha. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Thank you. Again, thank you so much for coming. I know we're in the middle of the early voting, so I appreciate you being here. I'd like for you to take a minute to give us your opening statement, your name, position, running for, and what you hope to accomplish in this position. Then I'll have two questions for you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for your time. My name is Lakeisha Dawkins. I am running for MISD School Board, place five. I am a 15-year social worker. I've worked in the criminal justice department. I've worked in the governor's office in the criminality department as well as worked with victims of violent crime. In my spare time, I'm a computer nerd, so I do a lot of IT work and I'm currently finishing my master's in IT. In terms of what I plan to bring to the board, the biggest thing that I plan to bring is fairness and awareness. And when I say fairness, simply whatever issues are brought before the board, because as time goes on and the things change, issues, different issues or different array of issues will come before the board. So when those issues do come before the board, it's my goal to bring those attitudes of fairness and discretion or discernment, should I say? And just being able to have an open-mindedness about whatever those issues are that they may benefit all children, all staff members, all of our paraprofessionals, everybody who the district represents at that time.
Great. Well, thank you for that. That's a very good initiative. Mike, your first question is, what are your thoughts on the number of immigrant children that be coming into the community considering the large population of Hispanic and homeless students? You know, and now we have Ukraine and we have a lot more coming from all over. So what are your thoughts with, how do we deal with that? How do we manage all of these different students with different needs?
Well, in the district and really America as a whole, but particularly in our district, we are a melting pot people. That's what America is built on. And so I really believe that when we get these influx of students from other places that we identify with each, what their individual needs are. Because just because they're immigrant, they're, they're my, they're, all their needs aren't the same. So one, identifying what those needs are and devising a plan of how to meet different needs of different students. So if language is the barrier, if poverty is the barrier, homelessness, whatever their barrier is, trying to find ways to help them meet the needs. Because once you meet the needs of a student, then it'll be, it'll make the education process a little more safe.
Great answer. Strategies which you use to ensure open communication with the parents of the district, with parents and communicating with the district. Because, you know, a lot of times at the school board meetings, it's just the board and maybe a few people in the audience. How do we bring the parents? How do we bring, how do we revitalize PTAs? Because we really need community in order for everybody to have a seat at the table and everybody's voice is heard. What would you do to try to improve on that?
Well, in terms of bringing more parents involved into the PTA, someone earlier said, you know, things a little conducive to the different time schedules of the different parents, and that is one. But also simply inviting them. I remember when my daughter was young and when she was going through the early elementary ages, oftentimes her teachers would reach out to me one-on-one and say, hey, can you, do you mind sitting for my class while I do X, Y, Z or while I go to this conference? Or whatever the case may have been or meeting. And so just when you give people that firsthand invitation, that makes them feel welcome. That makes them feel wanted. And so making parents feel wanted in the classroom, I think is a big deal. Oftentimes, parents don't feel like they have a place at the school. They feel shut out. They feel like you want my kids and you are the quote-unquote parent from, you know, seven to three, whatever time those school hours are. And their voice is obsolete. So really just inviting them back in. And the same thing with the rest of the community in terms of like information from the school board or school board meetings or the superintendent's office. It's really just doing a lot of firsthand, giving out firsthand resources, whether it's an email, whether it's sending out an alert through Triworth or whatever it is, but just really making those personal connections with the parents to reach them directly and not just posting it on the website and hoping that they visit our website.
Great. There's a lot of money out there from the federal government, state government with the Ezra funds, as they call them, you know, due to the pandemic. And sometimes I wonder if they're using, utilizing that money correctly. Supposed to be for tutoring and more teachers or whatever. But overall, what do you think is the most effective use of these additional funds that have poured into the districts?
Well, I think in terms of using funds effectively, regardless of the types of funds they are, I think the first thing that we should do is find out what our lowest common denominator is. There's a book and I know it's not really related to school board, but it's about businesses and the name of the book is called National Charity Element. And what they talk about is you have to identify what your organization's lowest factors are as well as what their highest factors are. And so of course you maintain those high factors, but you pinpoint what your lowest issues are. And because you can only be as great as your lowest common denominator. So finding out what that lowest common denominator is, and then we pour in unnecessary resources to fill that gap. And while we're filling that gap, we also maintain our stronger areas because we don't want our strongs to become our weaknesses while we're trying to make our weaknesses our strength.
Very good. Just bowing down to all of our candidates today because you're in early voting and you took the time and that speaks volumes to the kind of person, the kind of ethics that you have. And we thank you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. You have a good day. Yolanda McPherson on the line.
I am.
It's McPherson. How are you?
I am doing well. How are you?
I'm doing okay. I'm glad to see you. Glad you're here. And like I said, we thank you for taking the time to come out on the campaign. And the first thing I'd like for you to do is your opening statement, your name, position, running for, and what you hope to accomplish in that position. And I'll have two questions for you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share. My name is Yolanda McPherson. I'm running for MISD School Board, place seven. I am a retired educator with 32 years of real classroom experience. I am a certified teacher. I am married. I've been married for 28 years. We have two young adults who went through the Mansfield ISD school. They graduated Lake Bridge. I'm a grandmother, a new grandmother, ten months old, and I'm excited about that. My husband and I are extremely involved in the community. He's also a senior pastor in Fort Worth. He also served in the military. So we understand and are committed to serving our community and to giving back to our community. As a retired educator, I'm all in for education and educating.
Time up on the A. Now, the first question I want to ask, as you're an experienced educator of 32 years, the learning gaps have increased with the pandemic. What do you plan to do to address that? Because it's been two years in this pandemic. I think I hear, so go ahead. The learning gaps have increased with the pandemic. What's your plan to address these concerns?
Well, my, my first issue that I would like to address would be the retention of our teachers and especially our seasoned teachers, our veteran teachers. We need them to be in place to mentor our younger teachers that are just starting into the profession. And also to be that guide, maybe that extra voice for them. Also, looking at where our students are, we know that as educators, once our babies are behind, it's hard to catch them up. And so we're going to have to look at different strategies used and it's not a one-size-fits-all. And so we're going to have to look at different strategies in order to keep, get our kids where they need to be. That could be tutoring before school, after school. It could be small pull-out groups. It could be even Saturday school. I have done that as well. And so we're going to have to meet our kids where they are. We're going to have to partner with our parents and make sure that they are on board, that we give them strategies that they can use at home. So this is going to have to be a total 100% buy-in with parents and teachers. And it's going to have to be a commitment across the board to get our babies where they need to be.
Well, thank you for that answer. Since you have so many years as being an educator, now retired, you would be sitting in that seat as a certified educator. That means you bring more to the table than the average Joe. What would you think would be the most effective way you could use your skills as a board member? Because you were in the trenches in there with the children. So what would you tell the, the board members to convince them? What would be the best possible route to get through some things and make the district better?
Well, having that experience, and that's a good question. I appreciate that. Having the 32 years of experience in the classroom and in that position, I had several leadership positions, being team leader. It's, it's important that we learn to be good listeners. Oftentimes, we, we don't do that. We, we hear a person talking, but we're already trying to formulate an answer before that person finishes, finishes what they're trying to say or get across. And so we need to be good listeners. We're not going to please everybody 100% of the time, but we can find absolute common ground so that both parties will benefit. Because at the end of the day, our ultimate goal is to make sure that that student is receiving the best education possible. And so as a retired educator with, with that 32 years of experience behind me in leadership position, I have learned to be a good listener and take to heart, kind of empathize with the person who's speaking so that needs can be met and needs can be heard.
Very good. Very well said. Because a lot of times we have all these ideas and initiatives, but like another candidate said, you meet people where they are. And there may be something that you are not, had not addressed or are not aware of that you'd be able to help with. So I appreciate that answer. And again, I thank you for taking the time during early voting to come and be with us, be able to you. And again, thank you so much and I wish you well on your campaign.
Thank you to you and your committee for taking the time to speak with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm right here.
Ms. Courtney, how are you?
I'm good. Good.
Thank you so much again for taking the time. I know you guys are busy. First thing I'd like for you to do is give us your opening statement as to why you're running and what you hope to accomplish in this position. And I'll have two questions for you.
Right. Thank you so much. My name is Courtney Lucky Wilson. As you just stated, I am running for place seven on the Mansfield ISD School Board. I have a family of seven children. And currently I do have a teaching certification, but currently I work directly for the board and superintendent of a neighboring district, which is Cedar Hill ISD. I have had the privilege of serving on the board prior to this election and, and honestly had the honor of being mentored by someone like Pastor Evans. As you just heard him speak, I don't know of a better person to be taught how we need to do this, you know. And so I just ask that everyone come back out and please vote, you know, exercise your right.
Well, thank you for that and we appreciate you taking the plunge to run for public office. So right now, how do you expect COVID-19 and its, its impact to affect your, your school district? What are y'all doing there in Mansfield to counter all the negatives with, with COVID? And some folks wanting to take the shot, some not, and rules for that, rules for this? What, what are your, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, it's my, the, the candidates that went before me, everyone has stressed that we were in such a, as I like to say, a beautifully blended district. And so with that, you have all walks of faith and all walks of beliefs. And my, my opinion on that is to just, and, and, and the district's done a good job at it. But just what makes you happy and comfortable is what we need to do, you know. So if you want to wear your mask, absolutely. And you shouldn't be looked at funny for doing so or thought of differently, you know. Myself have some health issues, so I'm not able to get the vaccine. And, but at the same time, the rest of my family has it, right? And, and not to just protect themselves, but they feel like they're protecting me. And so I just think that we just have got to start showing some mercy and grace for everyone. And, and just, you know, let, letting people go with what, what they're comfortable with, you know, what means something to them.
Great answer. So what you're saying is use a common sense approach. One size is not fit all. And that is so true because there are reasons why different people cannot take the vaccine and we have to like listen and make sure that we're paying attention. So tell me this, being a board member, you have varied duties besides, you know, working, making sure the children are safe and satisfied. But what do you think about having more women and minority-owned businesses involved in, in businesses for the, for the district? What do you think about that?
Well, I am so happy you asked that question because I actually have two small businesses on the side. And one is in renovations and construction. And I laugh every time I call a new contractor needing a bid for something that I'm getting a job done on and they ask me the name of the company and I say it's Tex Anne Renovation. And I always get a chuckle from the men and they're like, Anne? And I'm like, it's girl on. And so absolutely, you know, I've, I've always been about empowering our women especially. You know, we sometimes forget that we are a very large minority group ourselves. And just like stressing coming out to the polls to vote. My grandmother, who unfortunately is no longer with us, she'd be well over 100, but she always stressed that to me on how much, you know, women fought to vote as well, you know. So I just think that showing these young women that their ideas can come to fruition. And sometimes with some walking guidance, I certainly need it myself, you know. I'm not, I'm not that good with the pay-for-work part of it, but I certainly want to get in there with my hands and get the work done. And so I would love to have. And so I would love to have more and more of their career days and things like that for the girls to see us, right? And, and know and have someone, you know, some strong women to look up to. So absolutely, let's bring in the, you know.
That is a very, taking the time to be with us today speaks volumes for the kind of person that you are. And make sure you put all information in chat.
So much for inviting all of us. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you. Okay, now we will be going to the Crowley School District. And Crowley has twenty-five campuses, including fifteen elementary schools, four middle schools, two ninth-grade schools, and two high schools, and an alternative learning center and career technology education center. The district serves more than sixteen thousand students who benefit from a laser focus on excellence in education, academics, arts, athletics, and real-world applications. And Crowley just earned a school safety certification from the Texas School of Safety Center at Texas State University. So doing a lot out there in Crowley.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for coming and coming during the early voting. We really appreciate you being here and taking the time. The first thing we'd like to do is have you give us your opening statement and what you hope to accomplish in your, in this position, and I'll have two questions for you.
Well, yeah, I just, you know, I've served on the Board for ten years. So I was first selected in, in twenty-twelve. Went to Crowley K through twelve. I have three boys who are all in the district. We talked about charter schools, and you know, it's, it's something, and you know, what Dr. Evans said is, is kind of dead on, you know, when it comes to charter schools, and we've been really making ground in there and bringing students back into the district. We've got, you know, I've got a really good relationship with our superintendent, who I think has been instrumental in doing a lot of good in the district, and it was a really good choice that we brought him on five years ago. And then, you know, the main thing is just working with fellow board members, you know. And as I'm campaigning, there are a lot of things people are, are complaining about, and, you know, I can't really say a whole lot. We have, we come and, and we, we come to a consensus and we get things done. And, you know, I may not always agree with everything, but I'm not going to sit there and bash my fellow board members for, for things that maybe I felt the other way, but.
How do you rate Crowley ISD regarding school budgets and meeting the goal expectations?
Well, I think we've done pretty well with budgets. I, I mean, on the Board, I'm kind of known as the, the big guy that's focused on, on budgets and, and finance a lot of times when that comes up. You know, we've been running, honestly, it's, it's hard, because every cycle, we've been running a deficit budget. But then by the time things shake out, and I wish our budgeting was a little tighter. But, you know, our CFO is very conservative on, on the numbers, as on the revenue numbers, and the revenue is always higher than we, we project. But expenses are generally a bit lower because of, you know, staff positions you didn't have filled and that kind of thing throughout the year. So, so we've been making it work, and we've been, you know, adding a little bit to the, to the budget surplus every year, but we're keeping it right around the, right around the right mark, you know, two and a half to three months. So, well, I think being able to, to do the things that we need to do, you know, we just raised our pay to be the most competitive in, in Region Eleven or in the area. You know, obviously, other districts are going to give raises too, and so they'll probably bump up above us, but we're, we're still, we're doing well there. We're, we've been raising pay for our, our lower-paid, you know, paras and things like that, and we're, we're talking more about that, what we can do there, and trying to make investments in, in improving, you know, getting kids caught up, you know. And obviously, we've got, you know, the federal funds that we still have there to help, you know, supplement those, those things. But as far as the budget, I think that's something that we've, we've handled very well, and we haven't had any issues in the last few years.
Very good. Very good. I'm glad I asked you that question. Since you are being, coming up for reelection, you've been there, so you've seen a lot that's happened on the Board. What are your thoughts regarding the district's strategic vision for 2025? I saw that on your website, that, you know, I know with the pandemic, that's probably going to put you off a little bit from what you had originally planned. But what have you had to readjust your goals, or what is the plan?
Well, you know, we set those, we set those goals, the, well, the strategic vision, you know, out of a five-year increment. And so, you know, I, what I can say is when Dr. McFarland came over, we brought him over from Lancaster. I mean, his goal, it was to make, you know, Crowley ISD the top in Tarrant County, you know, and that's something that, you know, we're all, you know, behind him, and who wouldn't be, right? So, you know, and we were making great, we were making good progress. So I mean, the first year, I, I think he came on in the first full year, or maybe, you know, anyway, it was when the ratings started. You know, the A through, or whatever. And we got a C. We were seventy, which, you know, quite frankly, for a district that's seventy percent free and reduced lunch, and that, you know, we were, we were kind of on track with most of the other districts that fit in the same kind of democratic, demographic category as we did. You know, we know that we can, you know, not defined by demographics, but, you know, that's the starting place. Year two, we went up thirteen points from seventy to an eighty-three and a B. And, and then, you know, we were set for 2020 to be, you know, a high B or a low A based off all the benchmarks and everything else. And then COVID hit, and now we've got to deal with, what was the question? Oh, the, the strategic vision. I got it.
Yes, yes.
Now, you're right. We have, we have setbacks. We've got, we've got learning issues. We've got behavioral issues are becoming more and more of a problem in the high schools. You know, and we've got a lot of things that we've got to figure out how to grapple with. I think we're making some good strides at the elementary level, especially. I feel pretty good. We've got, we've rolled out the additional school days model, which I don't think everybody loves, but it's optional. It's optional for teachers. They don't, you know, they can go to other campuses. It's optional for students or parents. They can go to another campus. But we've got additional thirty days of school there, and that's given, you know, teachers the opportunity or more money, students the opportunity for more.
Time up.
So I wish you well on your campaign. Thank you so much for coming our way and our voters getting to hear from you, and please, and good luck on your campaign. Thank you so much. Okay, next we have, do we have Darryl Davis?
Yes, ma'am. I'm here.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I can't complain. Thank you so much for coming and doing early voting. We appreciate that. And the first thing I'd like for you to do is take a minute to your opening statement, and then include your name and what your position you're running for, and what you hope to accomplish in the position. Then I'll have two questions for you.
Sure. Thank you so much to you and the committee for hosting this forum. My name is Darryl Davis. I am a candidate for Crowley ISD Board of Trustees, Place Five. And I am grateful again to have the opportunity to share with you all. Shout out to my long brother, Dr. Michael Evans, who is certainly a brother indeed. But I am running because I want to get back to a place where our district is focused on the best interest of our students. We have begun to cater to those who are putting politics and personalities and all of these things above what is in the best interest of our students. And so I want to get us back to a place where we are focusing on three things. Number one, student academic performance. Our students deserve the best opportunity to be successful. Secondly, I want to also focus on school safety, whether we are talking about COVID or we're talking about school shootings. We need to make sure that all of our students are safe, because we cannot expect them to learn in an environment in which they don't feel safe. And then finally, I want to also make sure that we focus on faculty and staff resources. We are dealing with a shortage of teachers.
Safe school measures. What is, what safe school measures do you think are needed at this point with the winding down of the pandemic?
Well, I think number one, when we talk about school safety, we're not just talking about physical safety of the children, but we also need to focus on the mental and emotional health of our students. A lot of what we're dealing with has to deal with the fact that there are, again, mental and emotional issues that our children have not had the opportunity to have addressed. So part of a way of making our schools safer is by also having the mental health resources that are essential for our students, again, to feel safe in that environment. COVID has done a number on us as adults, but guess what? It, it, it had an impact on our children as well. And if we continue to approach education the same way we've done it for the last ten years, then we are, we're putting our, our, our students at a disadvantage.
Good answer. Thank you for that. And since you would be new on the Board, and of course, it seems as though you've been active anyway, you know, in, in the system. How would you describe an effective school board member? What would you do different from what the, the school boards are doing right now? What would you do different as a school board member, coming on new?
Sure. Sure. Great question. Well, number one, just let me talk a little bit about my background, because I do have a background in education. I also have a corporate background. Prior to going into education, I was a representative for a Fortune 500 company. So I have a corporate background, but I, I chose to leave my corporate, my corporate career and go into education. So I have experience in the classroom as well as I've been an education administrator. I have a master's degree, a master's degree in education, particularly educational leadership. So those things, I think, have uniquely prepared me to serve on the Board. One of the things that I am very honest about is that I don't necessarily know all of the things that the Board, all the information that the Board has as they're making decisions. But one thing that I can ensure is that under my tenure, we will again focus on the best interest of our students. Because I think, again, we have, we have found ourselves tiding with the public about mask mandates, about social emotional learning, about CRT, and all of these things, which in a lot of cases, we are taking the argument off of focusing what is on the best interest of our students. And so that's what I will bring. I will bring a heart for service and a passion for our children. Not to say that doesn't currently exist, but again, with my experience as well as with my passion and my burdens for children, I believe again that I will bring something new to the Board so that we can again get our children back to where, where we expect them to be. Certainly, I will certainly do so. Thank you all again for having me.
Thank you so much for coming, and I wish you well on your campaign.
Thank you.
Going to South Lake Carroll ISD, Ms. Laura Durant. Ms. Durant? Laura Durant?
Yes. Hi there.
Yes. Thank you so much for being so patient.
Oh, well, thank you.
I don't have, I would have done a bio on your school district, so I'll ask you to do that. Tell, there'll be a little bit about South Lake Carroll. What, what you have up there? Sure.
South Lake Carroll is a K through twelve public school. We have eleven schools serving eighty-four hundred students and about eleven hundred employees. Our, our claim to fame, I guess, is that we have a zero percent dropout rate, which I'm really proud of, and a ninety-seven percent attendance rate. Ninety-eight percent of our seniors attend a college or university after graduation, and we have a great AP honors program and honors courses that serve over twenty-five percent of our student population.
Well, thank you so much. That was the prelim that I was supposed to have for you.
Well, I was asking in addition, so thank you so much.
I didn't want to take that away from your time. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew a little bit about, about South, South Lake. Anyway, the first thing I'd like for you to do is to give us an opening statement, your name, position, and what you hope to accomplish in this position, and then I'll have two questions for you.
It sounds good. I'm Laura Durant. I am running for CISD School Board Place Six. I have two children in the district, and I'm originally from Tennessee, which is the volunteer state, which tracks, because I'm a volunteer junkie. I love working in my kiddo's school as much as I can. I am the founder of Love Every Dragon, a support network for LGBTQ plus students. And I am running to defend public education, because I believe it is the cornerstone of our democracy, and we have to defend that loudly and fervently. My top three priorities are to begin repairing the relationships we have with our teachers and students. Our district has been in the headlines a lot lately, unfortunately, for all the wrong reasons, and we need to start building some of that community trust back. So having those hard, somewhat awkward conversations for the, for the betterment of our students. I am also really have put a lot of work into trying to implement a DNI plan here. We had a good plan going. Unfortunately, it, it got kind of railroaded, and there was all kinds of legal trouble. Oh, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. With that, your first question I have for you, how do, how would you go about addressing the underperforming schools? Do you have any underperforming schools?
Well, you know, that's, we, we really don't. We, that's one thing that is great about Carroll is that we have such high ratings with our programs, but I will tell you that that is because of teachers. My kiddos, I have one kiddo that is in the SPED program for dyslexia, and I cannot tell you the number of hours that teachers stayed after schools to help. They make sure that our students are getting the help that they need. I've been to a hundred ARD meetings, and everybody is really engaged. The teachers care about the students here, and so underperformance is not really, really a big issue that we have here in South Lake, which I'm, I'm very thankful for. But I will say, our, our special education department does not have the resources that it needs to be performing like it should. We're losing paraprofessionals. I think we could start fixing that by paying them a living wage. That would be great, since they're doing all the work. And also, we're losing educators, so try to work on getting them some more benefits and retaining teachers, good quality educators. So I think that's our biggest issue that we probably need to work on here.
Great, great, great answer. And with that in mind, what would be, what would your first initiative that you would try to initiate in, in being on the Board? What would be the top priority, since you are a high-performing school, but every school could use improvement? What would you work on?
I would work on bringing some balance to the Board. I value diversity of thought. And right now, our Board is very politically driven, and I understand that that's kind of the nature of things right now. But I believe that we need to start having some open, honest communication, be that forming strategic planning committees, what have you. But the, the real work, I think, is repairing the trust that we have lost with our community. That's a big part of being a school board member, is having an open line of communication, making sure that everybody has access to, you know, knowing what's going on, reaching out to community members, and also involving students. Students have been, a lot of students have been silenced here. Again, they, we've lost some trust with them as well. So start the work of repairing those relationships so that we can bring in more quality educators. It's scary how, how quickly we are losing great teachers right now. And I think part of that is trying to implement some sort of diversity and inclusion program. Almost every Fortune 500 company has one. Colleges have one. I think our, our district not having one is a disservice to our students, because they need to be prepared for life outside of what we call the bubble here in South Lake.
That is true. And with, with that in mind, this is your second question, I do believe. I've, I've lost track here.
Oh, that's the second.
That was to say, okay, good. Thank you again to come and speak with our voters and let them know what you're all about and what your plans are for your school district. And I thank, I wish you well on your campaign, and please make sure you put your information in the chat. So if other folks have any other questions for you, we'll make sure that you get in touch with them.
Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all putting this together.
Thank you so much. And do we have any, just getting ready to finish up. Thank you so much for taking the time to come on. And first thing I'd like for you to do is spend one minute, give an opening statement about your name and position and, and what you're hoping to accomplish in this position, and then I'll have two questions for you.
Okay. Well, I'm Felicia Lyons. I've run for Crowley ISD School Board Place Seven. One, a couple of things about me is I've been in the district since nineteen ninety-seven. I've worked as a, I actually worked in the schools in various capacities for as volunteering. I also worked with first graders, teaching them how to read, a program called Read to Win. So I've done that for a few years. I've also been involved on several committees that they've had within the Crowley ISD School District. Couple of things that I hope to get to accomplish while I'm working as the Board Trustee is making academic performance, number one, for all of our kids. Making sure that we're taking care of our teachers and for as paying, you know, pay raises, making sure that they're getting the pay raises, not only just the teachers, but the staff itself, the paraprofessionals, along with the teachers. And so I'm just hoping that people will understand that it's important.
Time up.
Okay. Well, thank you for that answer, and thank you for hopping on the call, because I know you guys are in the middle of early voting, and you're trying to, to get that done. The one question I want to ask you first is, what is the plan for all students who have either disappeared off the grid or have not learned the TEES in their grade level due to the pandemic? How would you handle that? What, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, number one, we need to find out where these kids are. If it takes going out door-to-door to find out if they're still living in the area, we need to do that. But I think it's very important that we reach out to those children so they don't fall far further behind. So it's so important and critical for the district to make sure that if the kids are still in the district, that we need to go find them. And that would be my goal, is to see, see what strategies as a board member that the school is taking to reach out to these families and continue to support our teachers and our administration in the effort of reaching these kids and making sure that they're up to par on their grade level.
Well, thank you for that, for that answer. And on the last question is, due to the pandemic, a lot of kids have experienced a lot of trauma, and it's affected their learning and their behavior. And it's, and it's some kids have had violence, police activity, life threatening. And it's, and it's some kids have had violence, police activity, life-threatening, the natural disasters. There's been so much. We can go on and on. So you, you know, the kids are in all in different places and, you know, and different learning levels. What would you do to try to put your arms around this 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 issue?
Again, you know, because I, you know, a lot of us are affected by it, and surely I can imagine a lot of our kids are as well. But one thing we need to make sure the kids understand is that we care about what's going on in our environment and what's going on in our lives. Mental health is very important, not only just as an adult level, but for our children, making sure that we have the resources or getting the resources to help our kids. So that would be one of the biggest push that I would look at. Our district is Crowley. What are we doing to to help with the mental health needs of our children? And making sure that we reach out to these families that are dealing with issues as far as mental health and violence and, you name it. Because, again, yes, we do need to make sure that our kids are being taken care of.
Well, thank you for that answer. And again, I think that was your second question.
Okay.
And we have 21 ISDs in Tarrant County. That's a lot. And it would be great, one of the jobs of educator to educator is to build a network that supports Texas public education. And that is one of our main goals, is to make sure that we make sure that all of our educators and friends of educators are doing our best to only put folks in office that support public education. And and that is a tall feat, because as you know, with everything going on with the book banning and CRT and all of that, we want to make sure we have people in there with with common sense that are going to do the right thing for our children. I think that was one of the things that Dr. Evans said, that being the biggest thing about being a board trustee is doing what is right, what is best for our students. And we can't get past that. But I wish everyone well on their campaigns. And I'm so glad that you came to see us today. Our organization has been together since 2009, and we still plan to be here so we can hear from the candidates.
You, Cheryl, and the Educator to Educator Network, y'all did an amazing job putting all this together. It was thoughtful. It was informative. I personally, as a former teacher, I feel super energized by all the things I've heard. I'm more hopeful for my own student, my own children's future, and I just, I think this is great. And I hope people really do see that this is foundational to our democracy. It's an informed public, an informed voting public. So thank you so much to everybody for participating and for putting it together. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you all so much. First of all, Cheryl, thank you for you and for the Educator to Educator Committee. Y'all are amazing. I love what you're doing in the revitalization. And I love working with Rachel. She's an amazing communications director. I love working with her. And thank you to all the candidates for running. I know it's hard, especially for hopping on. It's hard, you know, while you're trying to reach voters and you have a lot going on. But thank you, everybody, and all the participants that came to watch and listen and be informed. There's nothing more important than informed voters. That's it. Thank you.
We had a huge team that put this together, and it would, we wouldn't have had it got, been able to get this done without the the help of everyone on this call. And I appreciate everybody that volunteered to help. And without further ado, this is an exciting election season. Oh, we have John Lopez on the call. Hello, John. John Lopez is a city council in Grand Prairie. Can you say a few words for us, John?
Hi, Cheryl. Yeah, I didn't want to prolong the meeting, but know great information that y'all shared this afternoon with us. You know, as a city council, I mean, one thing we have to do is have great schools in our city. So we have to work hand in hand with school board trustees to make sure we have the same vision for our neighborhood. So thank you for the information and and definitely learned some things about each candidate today. So thank y'all for that.
Thank you, John. We appreciate you for what you do for our community as well. That being said, I guess we're about to end, unless I miss somebody, and we got all of our candidates. But stay tuned for Educator to Educator. We are not going anywhere. We're here front and center to do what we can to make sure that the public is educated and know what is going on and what the issues are. So it's really important that you guys stay in touch with us. Now that I have your email, you're in trouble, but because I'm going to reach out to you. And it's important for us to coalition bill, that we can communicate, that we can, we should all be able to sit at the table and talk about things. We may not agree. We can agree to disagree, but we should be able to engage and have a conversation about what is important. I see Diana on the line. Diana, do you have anything you'd like to say? Sala?
Hi, Cheryl. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you all, both to Educator to Educator and all of the volunteers, the candidates that spent their afternoon sharing all of their insights and answering all of the great questions. Overall, it was incredibly informative forum. And for me, as a voter, it's good to to know and hear that we have so many individuals that are so passionate about our teachers, our students, our community. So this has been such a, sorry, I apologize for the noise. I'm at a polling location, full greeting, as I was listening in. So, but yes, I I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diana.